Those are some beautiful Emmys. All right, looks like we're all ready to go, folks. We've got a green light here up at the dais for the council members. So let's let our lieutenant get seated here and then we'll get ready to go. Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Edina City Council meeting. It is October 17, 2023, 7:03 PM. And as you listen to Director Bennerott, just one more reminder that there could be folks in this world that we're operating in since COVID watching on television on cable TV or at edinamn.gov, live meetings, or facebook.com, and they can participate in the meetings just like those of you that are here. But as Director Bennerott said, we'll call on folks here before we go to the virtual world. And we don't have any public hearings this evening, so we have one opportunity here for folks to come in and address council on matters that are of concern to them, and that's strength of public comment. And just remember, a reminder that if it's on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing, it won't be something that you can address with the council, whether you're here in person or listening to us online or watching online. So there's the phone number. The public comment comes up fairly quickly in the agenda, so get that number written down before we switch back to the regular meeting. And now I will call the meeting to order and ask our clerk Sharon Allison to call the roll.
Councilmember Agnew?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Riser?
Here.
Mayor Hugland?
Here. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. Next, we have a form of meeting agenda. Does anyone wish to modify the meeting agenda on the council? Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as published?
Still moved.
Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds the approval of the meeting agenda as published. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the meeting agenda as published, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. And now we are on to community comment, folks. And just as a precursor, I'll tell you that generally, our city manager responds to community comments that were made in the meeting two weeks prior. And this evening, we're going to defer those comments until we get to the next meeting. So he'll cover two meetings at once in the next meeting. So for community comment, let's go first to folks that are in the audience and ask them to come forward and address the council on any matter that's of concern to them. Are those Emmys in your way, Mr. Zickert? Whenever you start, we'll start the clock. So you're not on the clock yet. Go ahead. Let's get you a handheld microphone, Mr. Zickert. It's going to be hard to hear you without that.
My name is Ralph Zickert. I live at 4311 Cornelius Circle. This is a follow-up to my August 15 public comment, to which Mr. Neal provided no reply in the subsequent council meeting, or subsequent to that. The questions presented that night remain unanswered by Mr. Neal and his staff. Number one, why city size was or was not an appropriate criteria for the selection of cities against which to compare best practices? That's the first question. To be clear, it was Edina city staff, not bar engineering, that chose to select benchmark cities based on the city's size rather than the city's specific best practices and its comparability to Edina's clean water issues. Question two, why were the following criteria not incorporated into the clean water strategy priority matrix? A, the interconnectedness of water bodies, and B, a water body's importance to storm water and flood management. The presentation by staff at the August 15 work session stated it would be too difficult to incorporate the interconnectedness of water bodies into the clean water strategy priority matrix, and staff was silent on the reason not to include the importance of a water body's impact on storm water and flood management, ideas suggested by two lake associations. In light of the council's recent approval of a $280,000 study, whose purpose is, and I quote, "lead to a construction project that provides flood risk reduction, water quality benefits, and potentially other natural resource and community benefits." To me, this sounds fairly convincing that the interconnectedness of water bodies, together with storm water and floodwater management, are issues worthy of adding to the priority matrix. Or are the goals of this $280,000 study really something else? What's even more disappointing is that in a conversation with staff regarding clean water strategy process, the Lake Cornelius Lake Association has been accused of trying to game the system by promoting these items. Game it? Really? How so? By promoting criteria that clearly have a broad community impact and a direct link to clean water? I'd like to leave you with one quote. "One of the highest value activities for a surface water management program is to ensure that these assets continue to work as designed to prevent or reduce discharge of pollutants to downstream lakes and streams." Who said that? Jessica Wilson, today, presenter at the Minnesota Water Resource Conference. Edina deserves better. Minnesota deserves better.
Mr. Zickert, would you go ahead? You're not finished, I guess.
Jennifer has a copy.
Okay, good, good.
My name is Ralph Zickert. I live at 4311 Cornelius Circle. This is a follow-up to my September 19 public comment, to which Mr. Neal again provided no reply.
Mr. Zickert, tell me what you're thinking about here. That you wanted to go over three minutes?
This is my second topic.
All right. Yeah, so...
As I said in the front end, I've got three topics. All three are separate.
Yeah, well, it's a difficult situation because what we do is try to allow people three minutes for their remarks or their concerns, whether you've got one concern or multiple concerns. So let's get this...
And just this last meeting, you had four people, three or four people get up that you allowed nine minutes, all on the same topic.
But they're, yeah, they're separate people with separate concerns, sometimes the same concern. Yeah. Well, Mr. Zickert, let's not quibble about it here. You go ahead and finish your remarks, and then we'll have a conversation about this at the council level.
My name is Ralph Zickert. I live at 4311 Cornelius Circle. This is a follow-up to my September 19 public comment, to which Mr. Neal again provided no reply in the subsequent council meeting. To be fair, apparently, my comment was not perceived as a question. Therefore, in the spirit of Alex Trebek and Jeopardy, let me rephrase. What is the timeline to address the woefully low $175,000 total buy-in, if you will, total buy-out, associated with the cost of a developer choosing not to allocate the prescribed number of affordable units per city policy? As a resident, I believe it's imperative that this issue be prioritized ahead of finalizing the HRA tax increases associated with the $100 million initiative currently on the table for affordable housing. My name is Ralph Zickert. I live at 4311 Cornelius Circle. This is a follow-up to my September 19 public comment, to which Mr. Neal replied, "Mr. Zickert was unhappy about Lake Cornelius vegetation management." While it's true my comments included mention of Lake Cornelius and vegetation management, Mr. Neal's reply falls well short of an answer to the comments presented that night. Further, those comments were and now continue to be elevated to council level because they still have no answer. Therefore, I'll rephrase the two issues for which I saw an answer. One, why has the city refused to pursue accountability for failure of a vendor to execute a contract after overwhelming evidence has been presented multiple times? Performance that at its worst, one could call fraud; at its best, one would refuse to use the vendor for future work. Further, in light of the failure to complete the contract as specified, several reasonable changes have been requested of staff, all of which have been refused. Question two, how does staff's current strategy of not treating curly-leaf pondweed result in improved water quality for Lake Cornelius? As already noted, staff's decision not to treat the lake does not reconcile with the DNR, Nine Mile Creek Watershed District, or the city's own past practices. For the benefit of the council, who I would not expect to understand what was entailed with the contracted survey, I'll share a description of the process prepared by Van Ness Lake Area Water Management, our counterpart to Nine Mile Creek Watershed District. A point intercept survey incorporates the use of GPS to locate predetermined points where a double-tined rake attached to 11-meter rope is used to collect specimens. At each point, the device is thrown out approximately 1 meter and then dragged across the lake bottom for approximately 1 meter. Plant species are then identified and given a ranking based on cover of tines of rake. You take a rake like this. They're in a boat. They toss it out into the lake, and then they drag it back, time after time after time. Just as shown in that picture there. The vendor was supposed to have performed that very process 128 times on Lake Cornelius' North and South Basin, while crisscrossing the lake 18 times. For all the reasons shared on September 19, it did not happen. Edina deserves better. Minnesota deserves better.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Zickert. Have we got copies of everything? Okay.
Jennifer's got it.
Good. All right. Thank you for coming in. We'll get these addressed for the next meeting.
David Frankel, 4510 Lakeview Drive, Edina. Many of you may be wondering why I have a compassion, concern, whatever you like to call it, for the Americans with Disabilities Act, or as often referred to as ADA. I've worked in the military healthcare system, as well as currently volunteering in the Veterans Health Organization in Minneapolis. I worked at Walter Reed Medical Center amidst the height of the war in Iraq and Afghanistan. As well as I'm well attuned to what goes on in the world, it was an eye-opener to work in a hospital that at the time was a trauma one medical center for servicemen and women coming back to the United States with traumatic injuries, which is a medical way of saying they lost one or more limbs. It's a difficult place to work, seeing all these individuals having lifelong problems if they survived. To come back to Minnesota and see the lack of concern for ADA in Edina is really upsetting. I hear things from staff that are really unimaginable. I would never hear these things in Washington, DC. Things like imperfect project, or that's really all we have to do. You should be doing more. You're doing 110%, not 80%. And it's difficult to hear the language from staff on these issues. And to be honest, I've complained to the state about it, and they're working with the city to find a resolution to the issue of some of the projects in Edina. If that doesn't work, I'm willing to go even further with another filing with the federal government. Next topic is the city manager's contract. There's been no discussion about the city manager's review for this year. There's been no discussion about if the city manager's contract, which expires at the end of this year, will be renewed. And just to verify that you know there will be a city council election next year, and there's a good possibility we may have a new mayor, and if you give the city council, the city manager a new three-year contract, the new mayor may choose to have a new city manager, and there's a buy-all clause in the city manager's contract of one year's salary. You should all be familiar with that information. And I'd like to know what the city council's plans are starting next year. Will there be another annual review? Will the contract automatically be renewed? The last thing I'd like to bring up is the P-card statements. It's evident that there's no control over those purchasing cards. There's just an amazing amount of what appears to be waste on those cards. I publish those on the website, nextdoor.com, and I know four of the five council members are on Nextdoor. I would take a look at some of the comments from residents about some of the purchases. The one I would point out is the August P-card statement that has almost $6,000 of charges at Chick-fil-A in Eden Prairie. $6,000 of chicken? This shouldn't be tolerated. There has to be oversight. There's other charges. There's heavy expenses for travel. I saw almost an $800 airline ticket. There may be ways to excuse or talk out of these things, but it does not look bad when you look at it in black and white. I'd like to see more oversight. Part of that oversight could be a new culture at the city hall. And I'd also like to have public explanation of why the Braemar Ice Arena manager was let go last week with no public comment. Everybody knows about it over at Braemar. All my connections know about it, but I don't think you know about it until I told you. This will be the fourth ice rink manager under the current city manager. Fourth, how do you allow such turnover and not say what is going on? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frankel. Anyone else? Okay. Let's see if we've got anybody online that wishes to address the council on a matter of concern to them.
I do have someone on the line, but that caller has not indicated a desire to speak. Caller, if you'd like to speak, please press star 1 on your telephone keypad. That's the asterisk symbol, then the number 1. There we go. Operator, will you please unmute the line of our caller? And caller, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Andrew Brown, 5512 Park Place in Edina. And I work for the state of Minnesota, and the amount of P-card purchases done by the city, especially in regard to food and beverage, seem to be excessive, especially in regards to what Mr. Frankel just said regarding Chick-fil-A for $6,000. That wouldn't pass muster at the state of Minnesota. So I really encourage council to be very aggressive in making public what is going on regarding these P-card charges, because it's extremely disappointing that somebody who continues to see double-digit property tax increases being passed along with each biennium have this kind of lackluster care for property taxpayer monies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
I do have another caller on the line. Again, caller, if you... There we go. Operator, will you please unmute the line of our second caller? And caller, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record. Go ahead, caller.
Go ahead, caller.
It looks like the caller has unsignaled, so I currently do not have any other callers.
Okay. All right. Very good. That concludes the community comment portion of the agenda. As I mentioned, the city manager will respond to these comments, as well as comments from the prior meeting at our subsequent meeting. Unless there's anything you wish to address this evening that's sort of close in time.
Thank you. There is one comment. This comment about Chick-fil-A. And I can tell you that what happened in that case is the staff at our ice arena purchased Chick-fil-A sandwiches from a Chick-fil-A restaurant in Eden Prairie that brought them to the ice arena to sell at the concession stand. That's what happened. It's a normal course of action. It was an innovative way to bring a new product into that concession stand and sell it. And we do those kind of things all the time.
So they purchased from Chick-fil-A in Eden Prairie and resold them at the ice arena?
Yep.
All right. Very good. Was there anything else you wish to address this evening? You want to wait? Okay. All right. Let's move on then to the consent agenda. And I don't think... Was anyone in the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda in a single motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds the adoption of the items on the consent agenda in a single motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the items on the consent agenda in a single motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Those are all approved. And then we are on to special recognitions and presentations. And this is really... I first heard about this on Saturday night at the Rotary fundraiser, and we've had some folks win some Emmys. And our communications director, Jennifer Bennerott, and has a guest with her, J.J. Murray, the executive director of the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences, Upper Midwest Chapter, is here with her as well. And so I'm going to now turn it over to Director Bennerott to talk about who the award winners are for these two Emmys. Director Bennerott.
Thank you, Mayor Hugland. Though the city had used its government access channel for a few programs, including the Wayne Courtney Show in the 1990s, Edina did not televise its city council meetings or fully use its government access channel until after these council chambers were built in 2004. We contracted with the city of Bloomington to manage production of our meetings until we could lay solid plans for our own video production. Government has long had a reputation for creating boring videos. Our goal was to do better, and that goal was simple: create quality videos to share information and engage with our public. Over the years, we have worked hard as a team to hone our skills and adapt to our residents' desires for receiving information in this way. Since nearly the beginning, we've been fortunate to have Scott Denfeld on our team. He was first hired as an intern and then the city's first video production coordinator. A few years ago, he was promoted to video production manager. The city won its first regional Emmy in 2009, a true mark of distinction. Over the years, we won four more. We were nominated for five this year, which is an honor in and of itself. But for the first time ever, we won two in one year. So right now, I would like to show you a clip from last weekend's awards presentation.
Nominees for Outstanding Interview Discussion. Enough Said, KMSP, Jesse Ventura Almanac Interview, Twin Cities PBS, On the Job, Edina TV, Spurgeon, Life in Photos, Bally Sports North, Viking Circle, Kirk Cousins, Vikings Entertainment Network, Viking Circle, Kwesi Adofo-Mensa, Vikings Entertainment Network. The Regional Emmy goes to On the Job, Edina TV, Scott Denfeld.
All right. I want to introduce you to somebody who worked with and know a little bit more about this job. This is Brandon Klacke. Good to see you, Brandon.
How's it going, Scott?
Hey, and thanks for being on the show today.
No problem.
So you've seen the show a little bit. You know how this goes. Tell us a little bit about your job and what you do here for the city.
Nominees for Outstanding Video Essayist. Midco Sports Magazine, Helmet Head. Midco Sports Magazine, Triumph Above All. Mushers enjoy bitter cold and quiet trails during John Beer Grease Sled Dog Marathon, WCCO. Nat Sound Magic, KSTP. Scott Denfeld Composite, Edina TV. The Regional Emmy goes to Scott Denfeld Composite, Edina TV.
We make monuments for families, obviously. That's our bread and butter. That's what we do all day, every day. We take a lot of pride in that. And then we also do the special projects, doing veterans projects. It gives you a lot of civic pride, you know, that we're able to erect something to help pay tribute to soldiers that have fallen and come home and just serve in general.
So here tonight to tell us a bit more about the regional Emmys and present them again to the city is J.J. Murray, Executive Director of the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences, Upper Midwest Chapter. Welcome, J.J.
Mr. Murray, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Sorry, I need to take a moment. It's an honor to be here. My father grew up just down the road, Woodham Drive. So to present something like this to the city of Edina gives me great pride and joy. The National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences, Upper Midwest Chapter, represents television and media professionals from Minnesota, North Dakota, South Dakota, Iowa, and Western Wisconsin. The entries are all judged by media professionals from other Emmy entry chapters across the country. So it's not us patting ourselves on the back. These are other media professionals from New York, Atlanta, San Francisco, Dallas, deeming your content excellent. So I'm going to be a mess. Scott?
All right.
Congratulations, everyone.
Well, this first proclamation we have tonight feels a little bit like this Emmy thing. It's a proclamation on extra mile day. If you think about people going the extra mile, to be as professional as they can be and do as good a job as they can, you've got to think about people like Scott Denfeld, and even our little actor down here at the end.
We call it talent. That's what they call it. Yeah.
So here's the proclamation on extra mile day, November 1, 2023. Whereas Edina, Minnesota, is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Edina, Minnesota, is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort and commitment and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Edina... individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Edina, Minnesota, is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Edina, Minnesota, acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 550 extra mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1, 2023 in the city of Edina. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Edina does hereby proclaim November 1, 2023 to be Extra Mile Day, urging every individual in the community to take the time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own personal life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, and world a better place. Is there a motion to adopt the proclamation with respect to Extra Mile Day?
Still moved. Second?
Member Jackson moves. Member Agnew seconds the adoption of the proclamation just read regarding Extra Mile Day and designated November 1, 2023 as Extra Mile Day. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the proclamation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried? The motion's adopted, and we will get that to the appropriate parties. And then the final proclamation this evening, before we go to another really terrific presentation, is Lung Cancer Awareness Month in Edina, and that's proclaiming November 2023 as Lung Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Edina. And that proclamation reads as follows. Whereas lung cancer is the leading cause of cancer deaths among men and women in the United States, accounting for more deaths than colon cancer, breast cancer, and prostate cancer combined. And whereas the five-year survival rate for localized lung cancer is 60%, yet only 24% of lung cancers are diagnosed at this stage. And whereas funding for lung cancer research trials are far behind funding for research for many other cancers, and additional research is needed in early diagnosis, screening, and treatment for lung cancer, as well as other lung cancer health disparities. And whereas lung cancer incidence is decreasing twice as fast in men as it is in women, each year more women die from lung cancer than breast cancer. And by 2035, more women will die from lung cancer than men will die from lung cancer. And whereas the stigma surrounding lung cancer creates barriers to early diagnosis, treatment, and funding for research has a detrimental impact on the quality of life of people diagnosed with lung cancer and hinders awareness of and research into lung cancer risk factors other than smoking. And whereas organizations working in Edina, such as the American Lung Cancer Screening Initiative and Women's Lung Cancer Forum, are committed to educating about lung cancer and lung cancer screening and working to increase lung cancer screening rates. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Edina does hereby proclaim November 2023 to be Lung Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Edina, and recognizes the need for research in lung cancer affecting women and lung cancer health disparities, and encourages all citizens to learn about lung cancer and early detection through lung cancer screening. Is there a motion to adopt that proclamation?
Still moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds the adoption of the Lung Cancer Awareness Month proclamation, which designates November 2023 as Lung Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Edina. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the proclamation as read, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried? All right. We'll get those to our clerk and on to the appropriate parties. And now we've got another exciting thing to talk about live here tonight, and that is the 2023 Images of Edina presentation. We've got Dan Dorr, our graphics designer, and Faroza Mehta, the editor of Edina Magazine, with us this evening. And we're pleased to have both of them here with us.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Hovland, and members of the city council. My name is Dan Dorr, and I'm the graphic designer here at the city of Edina. Join with me here is Faroza Mehta, editor of Edina Magazine, and we have the honor of presenting the 2023 Images of Edina photo contest. The city established Images of Edina in 2004 to recognize and collect photographs that capture Edina as a place for living, learning, raising families, and doing business. Each year, residents and employees who work at the city of Edina, or sorry, who work in Edina, are invited to submit their favorite photos taken in the community over the past year. Images of Edina is co-sponsored by the city and Edina Magazine, and I'd like to thank Faroza and the team at Edina Magazine for all their work managing the contest. This year, we had 77 submitted photos. A judging panel of communication professionals chose the winning photos in five categories. The photos were judged on a variety of elements, including composition, lighting, relevance to each category, and degree of difficulty. There was also an online vote on Edina Magazine for the Reader's Choice Award. And of the category winners, one photo was chosen as the overall best in show, which we will reveal tonight. Now for the winners. And to the winners attending in person, please step forward when your name is called, and we can photograph you accepting your award. For the Activities and Events category, our winner is Linda Scott for John Philip Sousa at Centennial Lakes.
Okay, for the Business category, we award Stephanie Thomas for her beautiful photo, All right. For the People category, our winner is Forrest Pearson for Friends. And for the Places in Edina category, again, we have Linda Scott for Reflections at Centennial
Yes, and thank you again, all who participated in the Images of Edina contest. Be sure to have your camera ready to get some great shots for next year. And winners, thank you for being here tonight, and congratulations on your wonderful photos.
Member Jackson.
Yes, thank you. So if this is 2023, and it started in 2004, what's planned for a 20-year celebration? Are we going to get a book together, or is there anything special planned for next year?
That's a great question.
We'll have to think about it. And also, the magazine's 20th anniversary is also in 2024, so we maybe will do something to incorporate both of those anniversaries. So yeah, I didn't think about that until you mentioned it.
Good. Thank you so much.
Ms. Mehta, thanks for being with us this evening.
Thanks for having me.
And Mr. Dorr, thanks for doing such a great job on this. Really wonderful presentation. So thanks. All right, we're on to another portion of the agenda, which is reports and recommendations. And the first matter there is Resolution 2023-77, Accepting Donations. It seems like every meeting we have folks and organizations in our town that want to donate something to the city, and of course, we have to approve that under state law by a four-fifth vote. So the first, you know, so this resolution is 2023-77, Accepting Donations on behalf of the city of Edina. Is there a motion to adopt that Resolution 2023-77?
Still moved. Second?
Member Jackson moves. Member Agnew seconds the adoption of Resolution 2023-77, Accepting Donations. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting Resolution 2023-77, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried? This period, we had gifts to the parking rec department. One in-kind gift was carable coffee, beverages for attendees at the Dog Days event, and then also generous gift from the Braemar Golf Association, almost $2,000 to the Braemar Memorial Fund. And then some in-kind donations for the Edina Senior Center, Home Instead and Monarch Health, Friends of Edina Library, Illini Health, Aetna. And then our own Donna Tilzner, who's worked over there for quite a few years, gave a cash contribution of $55 for general use. So thank you, Donna. All those names will be posted on the city website. The next matter is a matter that's, Emily Bodiker, our Assistant City Planner, has it, and it is potential approval of Resolution 2023-65, which is a request for a conditional use permit for Putt Shack Rooftop Dining 10 Southdale Center. Ms. Bodiker, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, the request is for a conditional use permit for...
No.
No, that's all right. We're good? Okay, perfect. All right. Tonight, the request is for a conditional use permit for rooftop dining at Putt Shack at Southdale Center. Putt Shack is a tech-infused mini golf experience, and the space is located within the former Herberger's Building at Southdale Center, above what will be the Kowalski's Grocery Store. Putt Shack is proposing to have food service on their outdoor rooftop patio. Rooftop dining is a conditional use permit in the planned commercial districts in Edina, and a conditional use permit is a use that the city permits in a zoning district when certain conditions are met. The city of Edina's conditions in our code are shown here on the screen. In this case, staff believes that all conditions outlined in the code is met, are met. The proposed hours of operation are between 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. The rooftop area is within the back hall of the building, behind the existing building front, closest to the interior side of the mall, and there is not residential property within close proximity. One Southdale Place is roughly 500 feet away, across from the parking lot. The Westin's over 1,000 feet away. The Onyx is roughly 800 feet away. The closest single-family residence is located within Richfield, and that's roughly 1,200 feet away. And the closest single-family residence in Edina is 2,000 feet away. The applicant has also submitted a lighting plan with the application, and the rooftop lining is required to meet the city's lighting requirements. The applicant and the rooftop is also required to meet the city's noise ordinance. The proposed application for rooftop dining meets the section, or the requirements in Section 36-612 of the code. The public hearing was held by the Planning Commission on September 27. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the request, and council had held the public hearing on October 3, and a public input report was included in your packet. Tonight, the council is asked to adopt Resolution 23-65, approving the conditional use permit for Putt Shack Rooftop Dining at 10 Southdale Center, with the conditions of approval as shown here on the screen. And with that, I can answer any additional questions. And Paul Straits with Arco Murray, a representative of the applicant, is also here to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Good. Thanks, Ms. Bodiker. Questions for Ms. Bodiker? Yes. Member Agnew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if granted, would the CUP follow the property or only be allowed for Putt Shack?
Putt Shack.
Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Bodiker at this point in time? Okay. And you've got other folks available from Putt Shack if we need to visit with them.
Correct.
As we did last time.
Yep, from Arco Murray, which is the representative of Putt Shack tonight.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So we've got a staff recommendation and a planning commission recommendation to allow this conditional use permit. Are there thoughts that any of our council members have? Member Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to point out that it looks like a lot of the concerns were about noise, and that we've addressed that. It's closing at 10:00 p.m. and just for my memory, is that sort of within the noise ordinance, that it's at 10:00 p.m. kind of change of use?
Yes, correct. The conditions for the conditional use permit for rooftop dining, those hours for operation are between 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m., and the applicant is meeting that, and they're agreeable to those hours.
Terrific. Well, I think it's great that we talk about Edina being a good place to live, work, and play, and this looks like a fun place to play. So it's pretty exciting.
Other thoughts from council members? Is there a motion to...
Mayor, I just wanted to comment on the question about the CUP. They generally run with the land. I don't know if Putt Shack is going to be a tenant there, or what the land ownership situation is, but CUP is generally run with the land. So if Putt Shack sold to some other operation that ran a similar, you know, business there, they could potentially utilize the same CUP to run the same type of business. Obviously, they're not going to want to run something completely different, but if they wanted to run a similar golf, you know, amusement-oriented business, they could probably use the same CUP. At least the owner of the property, if the CUP runs with the land, could rent to a similar operator, utilizing the same CUP.
Right. I'm assuming that in this case, it's Simon Development that continues to own the property, and this is a tenant, but the owner of the property could make that election to have a similar-type tenant come in.
Correct.
If this one left for some reason.
Yeah. Maybe it's a fine distinction, but I just want to make sure that question was adequately flushed out.
All right. Yeah, thanks for that. Other thoughts from folks on the council? Is there a motion to adopt the, or approve the conditional use permit issuance? That's one way we can have a little bit further conversation, I guess, on the matter.
Still moved. A second?
We got a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Agnew, to adopt Resolution 2023-65, which would approve the conditional use permit issuance for Putt Shack Rooftop Dining at 10 Southdale Center. Any further discussion? All right. Yeah. Member Agnew.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll add some thoughts, too, especially given that we did receive, let's say, a fair amount of public input on this particular matter. Some of the comments that we did receive, they were concerned about noise, as Councilmember Jackson referenced. So if Putt Shack sold to some other operation that ran a similar, you know, business there, they could potentially utilize the same CUP to run the same type of business. Obviously, they're not going to want to run something completely different, but if they want to run a similar golf, you know, amusement-oriented business, they could probably use the same CUP. At least the owner of the property, if the CUP runs with the land, could rent to a similar operator utilizing the same CUP.
Right. I'm assuming that in this case, it's Simon Development that continues to own the property, and this is a tenant, but they, the owner of the property could make that election to have a similar-type tenant come in?
Correct.
If this one left for some reason.
Yeah. Maybe it's a fine distinction, but I just want to make sure that question was adequately flushed out.
All right. Yeah, thanks for that. Other thoughts from folks on the council? Is there a motion to adopt the, or approve the conditional use permit issuance? That's one way we can have a little bit further conversation, I guess, on the matter.
So moved. A second?
We got a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Agnew, to adopt Resolution 2023-65, which would approve the conditional use permit issuance for Putt Shack Rooftop Dining at 10 Southdale Center. Any further discussion? All right, yeah. Member Agnew.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll add some thoughts, too, especially given that we did receive, let's say, a fair amount of public input on this particular matter. Some of the comments that we did receive was, they were concerned about noise, as Council Member Jackson referenced. And in those comments, a lot of them, I think, were also concerned at how late into the evening that noise might happen, as well as what type of a role we as a city would have in mitigating that. And so knowing that we do have our noise ordinances, and that they would be required to abide by those, as well as limiting the hours to the 10:00 p.m. and no later, I do feel comfortable with this, and I also echo the sentiment of it's great to see more liveliness returning to the mall. And I think that we've all been kind of watching that, and been wondering, how is it going to evolve? So it's amazing to see, you know, this as a potential opportunity to bring that back. So excited to support it.
Thanks for those observations. I too thought, under our code, if we have concerns that arise with regard to noise, with regard to lighting, with regard to hours, we can make the necessary adjustments, but to bring more life to that Southdale Mall site, and have more things for people and families to do, I think is a, it's a nice opportunity. So, all right, we've got a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-65, approving a conditional use permit issuance to Putt Shack Rooftop Dining at 10 Southdale Center. Any further discussion? All those in favor of issuance of the granting of Resolution 2023-65, which would approve the issuance of a conditional use permit to Putt Shack Rooftop Dining at 10 Southdale Center, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried? Well, welcome. Welcome to Edina, we say to the Putt Shack folks, so. All right, Mr. Lewis, come on up. This is also a matter that we had under consideration from our prior meeting, and pleased to have you here with us and lead the conversation.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you mentioned, this is an item that was continued from the previous meeting where you held the public hearing. This is for a site plan review at 7250-7300 West Bush Lake Road, for Minnesota Made Hockey, to construct a new 10,240-square-foot training facility on their site. Staff has reviewed the proposed plans and believes that it complies with all the requirements of the zoning ordinance, and so site plan review is required. So staff is recommending approval of the resolution that's in your packet, that's 2023-66. Since the prior meeting, we, per your suggestion, Council Member Jackson, we did forward on the sustainability questionnaire. They did voluntarily fill that out for us, so we do have that for reference. There are a couple representatives from the architecture firm here tonight, if there's any questions on that, but I'd be happy to take any questions from council.
Questions for Mr. Lewis on this matter? Yeah, good. Did you say Mr. Spurries with this time, too?
Corey Kerber from the architecture firm is here tonight. I couldn't be without saying.
Okay, very good. Questions from council members? All right, is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-66, which would approve a site plan at 7250-7300 Bush Lake Road for Minnesota Made Hockey?
So moved.
Second?
Member Jackson moves, Member Pierce seconds. The motion is stated. Any further discussion?
I just want to say thank you to following through with the sustainable buildings information. That's really useful.
All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 2023-66, which would approve a site plan at 7250-7300 Bush Lake Road for Minnesota Made Hockey, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried? All right, very good. And now we have a matter that we had a good, I think, healthy, in-depth conversation about at our last meeting, and that is what sort of colloquially called the bag, the bag fee. And Grace Hancock, our Sustainability Manager, is here. It was approved at the last meeting on a 4-1 vote, and we're now here to think about granting second reading and putting the ordinance in place. And both Ms. Hancock and Jeff Brown, our Community Health Administrator, are here for questions, and I think Ms. Hancock's going to, she had a few questions that she had to answer from the council from the last meeting, and so she has a memo of October 17, 2023, and now she's going to walk through that, I think, for us, so.
Great, yeah, thank you.
Manager Hancock, welcome.
Yeah, and thank you, council. So as you said, I'm here to present the second reading of the carryout bag ordinance, and I do want to welcome Community Health Administrator Jeff Brown, who will join me up here to answer questions when the time comes. So the action requested tonight is to grant second reading, and then to vote to approve or reject the ordinance under your review tonight. And the ordinance does have four provisions of note. You saw these last time. The only change that I'll discuss a little bit more in depth in a minute is that staff recommends not requiring that merchants who offer plastic bags, offer onsite plastic film recycling. And this change is reflected in the ordinance that's before you tonight. And then just a reminder that these provisions in the ordinance in front of you would affect all merchants with physical locations in Edina issuing goods to customers and using a point-of-sale system. So this version does include food establishments and retail. It would include merchants who provide goods via a third party, like DoorDash. It would not include merchants who may deliver goods to a location in Edina, but are physically located elsewhere. So if an Edina resident ordered delivery from a business in Bloomington, this fee would not apply. If a resident ordered, if a Bloomington resident ordered delivery from a business in Edina, it would. And then one more kind of foundation-setting slide, which is, our neighbor Minneapolis does have an ordinance like this in effect already. The Edina ordinance is reflective of that Minneapolis ordinance with three additional provisions. First, restaurants are not exempt from the Edina-proposed ordinance. Second, an annual report would be required for merchants to submit to the city. And third, the ordinance in Edina acknowledges the fact that when a merchant is a government agency, the fee cannot be collected, otherwise it is considered a tax. And I'll mention, like my slide says, the city does have enterprises that issue bags at this time, and the city would, in the spirit of the ordinance, would minimize carryout bag usage by reducing and removing plastic bags from our, from our system. So the council had six questions from its first reading, that I'm prepared to share more info on tonight. You do have this staff report in front of you that goes in depth on each of these, but I'll cover them verbally as well. So first, number one and number two are related, related to public health questions around the use of carryout bags. The city's public health team weighed in here, and of course, Administrator Brown here is available to answer some questions. But from the public health team's perspective, carryout, carryout bag fee would, there's not a public health issue. There's not an issue in charging for a takeout food bag. If a customer wishes to use a restaurant bag, they can still do so by paying a nickel. However, to point number two, public health staff does recommend continuing to accept grocery produce bags, since those can aid in avoiding cross-contamination between groceries like loose produce and raw meat. For question number three, the question of recycling plastic film at different sites. So upon further research, it's clear to staff that this, there's really not a robust enough plastic film recycling supply chain in Minnesota to support the hundreds of new plastic film recycling contracts that might result from this requirement. Further, plastic film recycling at places like restaurants would likely result in dirty plastic bags being put in the recycling bin, leading to greater contamination issues. So staff does recommend removing this provision related to offering plastic bag recycling due to supply chain constraints, and the risk of contamination. So as mentioned previously, the ordinance version in front of you does include the removal of this provision. Council asked also for a review of costs to implement this ordinance, either with proactive enforcement or with limited administration. So the costs here are new costs, not already intended to be incurred, such as the expected investment for a communications campaign. A campaign staff expects to take place regardless of the outcome of this ordinance discussion. So you can see here that full implementation would require a new full-time staff position, costing around $120,000 annually. And both full implementation and limited, limited administration would require a first cost of around $25,000 to establish the list of regulated entities. And this is really because only around 25% of the expected businesses who would need to comply with this ordinance are already permitted or licensed by the city. So the city would need to initiate a discovery process to understand what are, who are the other entities, and, and understanding how to contact them and get the word out about this new requirement. This summer, council did receive much higher estimates of the cost to fully comply and fully implement an ordinance like this, at $600,000. This was wrong. It's very different from what you see on your screen, and so I just want to apologize that staff didn't fully scope those numbers out this summer. These numbers, though, have been vetted, and they would be the true costs we would expect for either full implementation or limited administration. Regarding for how to pay for such an ordinance, so staff has explored the city's options to recover fee revenue. Unfortunately, we do not see a legal way to recover this fee revenue. Given the ban on bag bans legislation at the state level, revoking a license or otherwise penalizing a merchant who doesn't comply, or who may not even register with the city to demonstrate the intent to comply, is also not a legal pathway that we might recover funds to help pay for this ordinance. So in Edina City Attorney's opinion, really the only legal pathway to cover the cost of this ordinance would be to consider raising or otherwise reallocating the tax levy. Finally, council asked a few variations of what difference does this ordinance make? So staff has tried to really refine its opinion related to this question, and these, these are listed here and in the staff report, but basically, while it's unlikely that the city would be able, would be, yeah, would be able to connect measurable waste reduction to an ordinance like this, staff does expect that the city would experience reduced contamination in curbside recycling, thanks to fewer carryout bags. And there are a few potential differences that, while they're difficult to measure, are still important to the broader effort to lower waste and protect our natural environment, like behavior change, the potential for reuse, and reduction in atmospheric microplastics. So this concludes my presentation. I'm coming back to the action requested, and look forward to your questions and discussion.
Questions for Ms. Hancock or Mr. Brown? Yes, Member Risher.
Okay. First, I want to say, you know, thank you for reworking this, and I know this has been back and forth, and it's been, I think, a very fruitful dialogue. Can you back up? I can't remember which slide I wanted to look at, but one of my... Can you go back a... Okay, this is, let's see here. I'm struck by the reality, at least I perceive it as a reality, that having this dialogue has been a really important thing. At the same time, when I look at the emails that I have received, the vast majority that are concerned about the fee are relatively smaller merchants, retail establishments. I'm not hearing from large commercial enterprises that have presence in Minneapolis. And at a very high and fundamental level, what we are saying is charge a five-cent fee for paper or plastic, you get to keep the fee. And during this whole journey to understand and kind of come up with a way to reduce waste, one of the things that really has stuck in my head is the mayor's comment about all the money that the retailers would be able to keep. And we're really sort of incentivizing at the highest level, selling bags, and putting the burden to push back on the consumer. And here is where I get really concerned, and that is that it really is a regressive fee. I have heard from seniors in Edina who are on fixed incomes. I remember my graduate school days, where I was paid once a month, and, you know, two days before the end of the month, I had a quarter in my pocket. So if you don't have five cents, you don't have five cents. And I think it's easy to say, well, use the reusable bag. If you're driving around in your car, and you can put your reusable bags in your car, that's one thing. If you're riding the bus, and you get off at a stop, and you find yourself in a position where you can pick up something for dinner, that's an entirely different thing. The other thing that I'm really concerned about is that this ordinance is different from what Minneapolis is doing in terms of requiring restaurants. And I find myself thinking, yes, okay, you know, you could pay for that carryout bag. If you're somebody who goes and picks up your carryout, or calls ahead and then grabs it, you know, what are you going to do? Get there really fast with a reusable bag and ask them to put the contain... You can't, it's, it is illogical. It doesn't work. And so I see that as a problem, and potentially something that could be very challenging for restaurants, which sometimes really have a very thin margin of economic viability. So there is an issue right there. As I look at the ordinance, though, and this is what really, you know, I think, you don't want to throw everything out, but couldn't we have an ordinance that allowed merchants to substitute a different kind of action? Because the whole point is to have the conversation at the register, to ask, do you really need a bag? And so you could say, you must charge a five-cent fee. If this is something that is financially burdensome, you can have a six-by-four-inch card at your register, point-of-sale place, asking people, do they really need a bag? And that could be another act. And I feel like coming up with a one-size-fits-all, single solution is a way to end the conversation, and potentially derail some of the efforts that may be in play right now, or be ideas that people are thinking about, and ultimately to end the dialogue. And so if we're going to kind of keep it going, I would, I would like to see this be something that had more flexibility in it. I'm very proud that Edina is attaching responsibility and saying there needs to be a report for any retail establishment that collects a fee. I think that's a huge change, but I would ask that we make it possible, and we do this in so many, much of our code. There's another, you know, there's, there's another route, you know, and so why, why would we not do that in this case? So those are my initial thoughts, and I'll pause and let my colleagues reflect or respond.
Member Jackson?
Yes, I've got some questions before I get into comments. Manager Hancock, why don't you tell us why restaurants were included?
Yeah, so the, if we recall, the Energy and Environment Commission has been the originator of this topic of conversation. And from their perspective, so I will say that the commissioners put forward a report to the council in February. This included their opinion after much research into the question of how do we reduce single-use bags? And that research did include interviews with both the cities of Minneapolis and with Duluth, who both have bag fees, and who both accept, accept restaurants. From what I understand from that presentation, from speaking with commissioners and reading their report, is that they were not satisfied with the reasons given in other cities for exempting restaurants, that this question around the, some of the public health concerns, the commissioners felt were unfounded after conversations with other cities. They ultimately recommended that these restaurants, that the restaurants as an entity be included, and, and staff is happy to present that.
Okay. So my second question is, I got a call from a resident who wanted to make sure we had sufficient education around this. So I see there's an effective date of July 1, 2024. Is there anything particular about that date, or would, would a year be a better time to get sufficient education out to retailers and to the public?
So I would welcome Manager Brown to speak to this as well, but in our business interviews this summer, the city interviewed around 20 businesses, a variety of sizes, types, whether they're national or local. What we heard was not that merchants need a lot of time to update their technical systems or things like that, but rather that merchants were looking to the city to both provide resources for them, talking points for their cashiers, collateral, like posters or stickers to put up at their, at their businesses, and also to prepare shoppers for this change. So to let shoppers know, this is coming, be prepared, get your bag, come make a bag, come get a bag, what, what have you. come get a bag, what, what have you. From our conversations with our communications team, from environment commissioners who work in advertising and marketing professionally, what we hear is that really a three-month lead time is a good time to get folks prepped for something and then they don't forget it. So we did not hear from either entity, either the merchants or the shop, or, you know, potential regulated folks like, like shoppers, that, that more time would be better necessarily. But Manager Brown does a lot of public interaction, so.
You did a great job. I don't have a lot to add. As far as our licensed establishments, obviously we have much more of a relationship with them, so our communication with them is a lot smoother. But this, the majority of these are not facilities that we license and inspect, so that would more be a communications kind of outreach plan.
Okay, terrific. And then my final question is for you, Manager Brown. This other, this resident also asked whether the city couldn't provide some receptacles the way the grocery stores do, that the receptacles outside the grocery stores are always full. So there's more demand for that disposal space than there seems to be in the community. Is that something that we could consider doing? And are there sites where we could do that?
From a city perspective?
Yeah.
Sure, we can, we can definitely look into it. The, just on that same topic, the, I'm glad the, the idea of take, not having a restaurant accept the bags was taken out of the ordinance, that would be something that puts a burden on the facility. So it's, it's good that that was taken out. But yes, I think we can look at providing more access to that. I agree, anytime you go to Cub or somewhere, you see those, they're, they're full a lot. So that's definitely something we could look at through our organics recycling program, or recycling program.
Okay, great. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Member Agnew?
So I had general feedback. You know, overall, I really like this ordinance and am so proud to be a, a part of a city that is considering it. You know, we've had some of the larger cities, but it feels like we're one of the, the first kind of first ring suburbs that's really looking at it, and it's, it's amazing to see. I'm also so appreciative of the, the number of emails that we got from community members that are excited to see that the city is considering this and we're in support of the ordinance. The one part for me that I do want to hopefully garner some conversation from the council on is related to the restaurants. Because the, the point for me is, you know, I think about, you know, if I'm carrying out, that, that's easy, that's on me, right? Like I can go in and grab it and whatever. But I think about going through drive-through, right? And let's say I'm at McDonald's and all I order is french fries and an apple pie. Like that's going to be kind of weird to hand out the window. And then I also think of, and I was a former Jimmy John's delivery driver, so I'm really thinking of our food delivery members, right? They might be in a position where the customer is opting out of that bag, but then they have the french fries and the hamburger sitting on their front seat. And I can see them being put into a position of, one, either the delivery driver then is deciding to pay the five cents for the bag, or what you have is maybe a Grubhub or a different type of delivery service would mandate the fee of a bag, which is against what we're trying to do, right? What we're trying to do is drive down the use of single use bags. And so in this situation, I think that there's going to be more occurrences of the, the fee just being paid. It doesn't seem like it's as conducive to have this incentive for them to not get a bag. And so I think everything else in here, I really like the way it's been presented and evolved based off of all of our feedback. But that's the one point that I really want to hear what others think of and potentially adding in an exemption for restaurants for those purposes. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Pierce?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I, just general comments. As I thought about this over the, the past couple of weeks and have had a couple of conversations with restaurants, I started asking myself, are we focused on the right thing? And so where I'm going with this, we got, if you were to ask people what this ordinance is about, and we've just done it, right, everybody, we've just done it. Member Agnew is fairly consistent in saying, single use bag. And we had a working session where she challenged me on if I said I'll use a compostable one. And I don't remember if you remember this, but she goes, well, James, that's still a single use bag. And I, oh, you know, it is, right? And so there's, there's waste that goes into creating it, whether it's compostable or paper. Then you've heard us say, plastic bags. We have a number of emails from people saying, this is a great ordinance, we need to get rid of plastic bags. And there's a number of emails we have that suggest that. And then we talked about the last time for restaurants. And I can remember, we, we met with, there, there's one concern that there could be a restaurant that is selling, I think it was lasagna was the example, in a tin or paper box or whatever, and they may want to use a plastic bag for certain foods, right? And so as I started trying to process that, where I came to was, I, I think the benefit of getting rid of plastic bags made all the sense in the world to me. But if we asked restaurants, if you have a year to transition, if we said, you know what, we want every restaurant to not use plastic bags. And so if you would transition away from using plastic bags and use paper bags, which we already have recycling for that, if it's, if it has food, if it's soiled with food, we also have compostable for that. And so I think if we were to, to have an awareness campaign to do two things, one, we want every restaurant to move away from plastic to paper, and I suppose we could say or compostable, but I was thinking paper, because I also thought the same about Jerry's. If you're going to use paper, great, then no nickel, but you know what we want you to do? At every point of sale, we still want you to ask, do you need a bag? And if you do need a bag, you get a paper one. And then our awareness campaign says, when you get that bag, either recycle it if it's not soiled, if it's soiled, we want you to put it in the compost. And I think if we are, if we have a focus of getting rid of plastic bags and we're using the ordinance to do that, and we're taking some transitionary time to encourage restaurants and, you know, all retailers to use paper bags, to me, that feels like we would end up in a better position than if we stuck with this, you know, getting rid of plastic bags. And so I, I, I'm not, I guess I'm not really asking a question, I'm making more of a statement, but that was the logic that I, I came to as I started to process it, that I, I, I think I would, that would feel better to me, feels like we would end up in a better situation sooner if we did that, rather than include all bags, because we're incenting people to do something that we believe is better for the environment. So, and then I do have the same concern just in general on restaurants.
Did you have something else you wanted to add, Member Jackson?
I do, I, I'd like to make my comments as well.
Okay, you want me to go first, or you want to go ahead and make your comments?
Oh, you've got questions, yeah, go for it.
Yeah, I've got, I actually got a question for a city attorney. And it goes back to the issue I raised last time, and then Member Rissler raised it again. Could we mandate that the nickel go to, per bag, go to a nonprofit? And not go in the merchant's pocket?
I don't think so, Mayor. If the government forces collection of the money, I still think it would be deemed a tax if you direct them how that money has to be spent.
Okay, all right. Well, just an idea that came up. I worked hard over the last couple of weeks trying to figure out how to change my own mind, but I haven't. In fact, it's been reinforced really by what I've heard over the last couple of weeks. And then with information Grace Hancock provided in her October 17 memo, I like James's idea, Member Pierce's idea of trying to figure out how to get rid of plastic bags. It means getting rid of film plastic, film plastic, use of film plastic. Well, we know that there's a state law that says you can't ban film plastic usage at a local level. But if there was ever a time in Minnesota with the trifecta in place to get rid of film plastic bags, it would be this upcoming legislative session. And so if we, regardless of what we do tonight, or, you know, if we, if we defer to try to figure out something else, or we decide to punt and not, not do this right now, we ought to be thinking about putting in our legislative agenda with our legislators, let's get in front of the legislature, get rid of film plastic. And that would solve this problem all over the state. I've, just past couple of weeks, I've, you know, we had correspondence from residents, of course, and many of them or several of them are in the audience tonight that would like to see us do this, to put this in place. And the reasons were greenhouse gas reduction and way, less waste and the landfill. Well, from reading Manager Hancock's memo, I think there's at least one, maybe two recyclers in the state now that will handle film plastic bags. And when I go to juries, you can hardly get your bags in the, in the big bin, because, and they've had to, they've got a bigger bin over there now and it's still full. People are taking their things to, to the recycling location and wanting to recycle those things. In terms of the, so that addresses kind of the landfill issue, the greenhouse gas reduction, I have to kind of look at this on balance. I think about, what, what have we done to, to try to reduce greenhouse gas production in our town? We know that transportation is the number one producer of greenhouse gases, but, so I asked Manager Hancock, give me a list of things that we had worked on here. So the city has subscribed 100% of its electricity use to renewable resources. It's challenged the community to match our, our subscription of 12 million kilowatt hours annually. City is electrifying its fleet. We get, we've electrified about 5% of our fleet so far in the last couple of years. Well, if we're going to spend $125,000 a year, this is assuming we'd want to enforce an ordinance that we passed or had the ability to do it, I'd rather buy a couple of vehicles or three vehicles than spend it on trying to enforce this, this ordinance that I think has, is misplaced. The city is renovating City Hall, we're cutting energy use by a third. We're doing all these fantastic things with these programs that we've got. And we've got, we've, you know, we've sponsored all these energy audits, and, and the list goes on and on and on. I don't want to belabor it, but I had somebody who has a, is a local small shop owner and galleria tell me that for them, they, they don't give out film plastic bags, they give out really fancy bags. And then they're going to have somebody order something expensive and then charge them a nickel and then try to, you know, create a point of sale system that provides for that modification. They said it would be difficult. And of course, we heard that from Devonese too, with respect to takeout, that trying to figure out how many bags somebody's going to need and charge them without going back after the fact and charging their credit card is complicated. Member Rissler raised the idea that it was regressive. I think it is regressive. Not significantly regressive, but it's regressive. The onsite collection of bags, the arrangement to pick up bags, that part of those parts of the ordinance, I think we've talked about that. If we're going to do something about this, I'd rather establish incentives than, than use sticks. I'd rather, I'd rather, and this was suggested by Hospitality Minnesota, how about thinking about setting up some sort of a program where you don't need a bag, you're eligible for a drawing for some, something? Or if you, if you don't need a bag, we take a nickel off your, your bill. I mean, I, there's other ways to think of this through if we took the time to think about it and thought about it from an incentivizing standpoint instead of a punitive sort of method. But at the end of the day, for me, it, it's the same thing I thought last time, but juice isn't worth a squeeze to me. We're going to, we're going to theoretically spend $145,000 a year in the first year, maybe $125,000 a year on an ongoing basis, $120,000 to enforce this ordinance, or we're going to spend at least $25,000 to just set it up and let people do as they please, like they do in Minneapolis. Either one of those pathways doesn't seem palatable to me. And, and while I would like to do something about film plastic, nobody ever wants a film plastic bag, sometimes you have to take them. But I, I just don't think this is the right approach, at least for me. And, and I'm going to, I'm going to vote against it. Member Jackson?
Well, there's a lot to cover. So first of all, I, I don't know where our votes are at on this. I would offer an amendment to drop the restaurants if, if that's worth the trouble. So why don't I, I'd like to move that, that we strike restaurants from being affected by this ordinance.
A second.
Second, Member Agnew? Okay, yeah, you raised a really interesting point. I mean, there's some, there's several different pathways we could take here tonight. We could go this route of trying to figure out how to fix the things that bother people right now and pass something, or defer to try to address these issues everybody has, or not do anything about it. But anyway, we had a motion and a second on the table to eliminate restaurants from the scope of this proposed ordinance for the bag fee. Discussion. Member Pierce?
So I, I, I really wanted to speak to a couple of things that you said, Mayor, but I'll kind of do it in this context of the motion. We've heard from retailers, some of the concerns that, that the mayor has raised, there's a motion on the floor to exclude restaurants because of some of those. And so like what I, what I think about is, you've asked for this, there's a, for this to start in a year. And so like, why wouldn't we say to all the retailers, restaurants included, that are saying, we don't want this for various reasons? And I'm not judging those reasons one way or the other. I am going back to, let's accelerate getting rid of plastic bags, to say, okay, if you don't want the five cent fee, you know what? Okay, we're not going to do it. However, you have a year to move off plastic to a paper bag. And we'll give you a year to do that. And there are restaurants that are already using paper, there are some that are using paper, there are some that use a mix, there are some that use compostable bags. But I, but I do think this idea of government always having to have some ordinance, tax or law to get people to do what we think is best, and then we get this feedback that says, we don't want to do this for all these valid reasons, okay, we'll give you a year. You solve the problem. We can, Devonese, you solve the problem. We don't want plastic used bags. We aren't going to charge a nickel. You have a year. And then we can still go through the entire process of measuring usage, and if we still, we can go through the legislature, just like as a mayor suggested, we can do all of those things. We can execute, still execute an ordinance that says, this is what our intent is, this is our vision as a city. And in a year from now, if we haven't hit that mark that we've selected, then we need to take an additional action, which may be a five cent tax or punitive, however we want to word it.
Member Jackson?
Yes, so to the motion, thank you, Member Agnew, for your words about the restaurants. I think adding the restaurants
I think adding the restaurants in makes this much more complicated. If the bag ordinance is adopted tonight and it works, we can always come back and include the restaurants. I think this is just a complex issue, and for many good reasons, restaurants make it much more complex. So that's why I am suggesting that we, before we take a vote on the overall ordinance, we start by amending it and exempting restaurants from this fee.
Member Risher.
I appreciate the logic of that as well, but as someone who is advocating for building in flexibility within the ordinance, if we built in flexibility so all entities, including restaurants, could opt for a different action or come up with their own plan, then there would be the opportunity for some restaurants to say, "Oh, we want to do the five cent fee. Others, no, we don't. We want to have it," you know, whatever the alternative is. So that's my only concern there. And as I note this, I'm thinking, I'm getting the sense that there is value in this effort, but it needs additional work. And I'm wondering if it would make sense to table this ordinance and request that it get another pass-through before we try to vote it up or down.
I will make my point again. This is an amendment to the ordinance, is not a vote on the ordinance, and it's to amend it to exempt restaurants. And that's, that's all I'm asking at this point with this motion.
All right, any further discussion? All right, we've got a, we've got a proposed amendment to the ordinance. It is ordinance 2023-18, and the proposal, and with the seconder, is to eliminate restaurants from the scope of the ordinance. Any further discussion with respect to the amendment? Member Pierce.
So I apologize for saying this again, but I would support restaurants being excluded. But my apprehension is there needs to be a reason. I still think we need to be giving them direction on what we want them to do. So if the thought is we're going to exclude them and then continue to have discussion about how we move them away from plastic bags, then okay.
That'll be the next discussion I raise.
Okay, all right.
But just to the motion.
Okay. Okay. Get a motion and a second. We've completed discussion on whether or not to amend Proposed Ordinance 2023-18 to exclude restaurants from the scope of that ordinance. All those in favor of adoption of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried.
Okay, now, to the ordinance as amended, the phrase we like to use is reduce, reuse, and recycle. And that's in order of priority. It's not recycle, reuse, reduce. Reduce is the most important, whether it's a paper bag, whether it's a plastic bag, whether it's a compostable bag. It takes energy to make. It takes water to make. It takes oil to make. The plastic bags certainly. It takes fuel to ship it. It's a product in the market stream. And then it does have to be disposed of, whether it's through organics recycling, that has to be shipped away, whether it's recycled or whether it goes into our landfill. It all has to be handled. And so reduce is the number one priority of what we're trying to do with our solid waste. So if we reduce first, then there's less that we have to worry about reusing, and less that we have to recycle, and even less that goes into our landfills. So I always keep that in mind. Mr. Mayor, you mentioned a number of actions that the city has. The city, to my understanding, is only responsible for about 7% of our carbon footprint. The private market is overwhelmingly responsible for our footprint in terms of garbage, in terms of carbon footprint. And so we can take lots of actions, but we have to lead by example. So it's wonderful the things that the city are doing, but we've got to include our partners as residents and businesses in that action as well. To your point, Member Pierce, about wanting to help people and Member Risher as well, one alternative, and I do want to have a vote on this, but an alternative should this ordinance fail, is can we do just the reporting part of it? Can we reach out and get a baseline of information, do the education campaign, and see whether it changes in a year? To see whether our outreach is effective in reducing the number of bags used, whether they're paper, whether they're plastic, whether they're restaurants, whether they're retailers. You know, if we're not going to do this, which I think we should, I think that we ought to at least establish a baseline. In 2014, Scotland banned single-use bags. At the time, there are about 800 million single-use bags given out each year. And after the ban, it has been reduced, one year later, by, by my math, 81% to 650 million less bags being used. So this is, just charging a nickel, which is what Scotland did, it can be extremely effective in changing behavior and in reducing our waste. So I am strongly in favor of this. You know, it's hard to see the kids out here this evening, that when I was on the Energy and Environment Commission, the passion of our student commissioners on this was just overwhelming, and the concern about plastic waste, about what we're doing to our planet. And so I'm very strongly in favor of this, but I want you all to consider that reduce is the top priority of our solid waste footprint, reduce, reuse, recycle.
Thank you. Member Jackson, well said. Member Agnew.
Yeah, thank you. I have a, I have a couple of thoughts, because I think both, a couple of lines of conversation are interesting. We discuss a lot the carbon impact and reducing greenhouse gases, reducing emissions. And it's for that reason that I do want to remind the council that in the initial presentation, it was relayed that plastic, paper, and compostable all have greenhouse gas emissions. I couldn't find that report while I was doing my quick research, so I Googled it. And it seems that for creating the bags, paper bags are more carbon-intensive to create. Where plastics, on the other hand, they stick around a lot longer, right? And so when I go back to what we're trying to do is reduce greenhouse gas emissions, that tells me that we shouldn't just restrict to plastic bags only, that we really should be applying this to all single-use bags. I think the other part about this is, you know, referencing, using incentives rather than fees or government mandates. And the reality is, we're in the midst of a climate emergency. And maybe when Inconvenient Truth came out in 2006, we, you know, had the opportunity to really use incentives. But I think that we have, as Americans, have shown that the incentive of not destroying the earth is not enough. And so what incentives are we, as a city, going to implement that's going to create the action that we need to see? That's why I think we should support this and really see what we can do one step at a time as a city.
Member Risher.
I agree entirely, and I have spent a lot of time talking to people with the idea that we need to incentivize less use of single-use bags. We really do. How we do it is the big question, okay? And so you talk to people in Minneapolis, and some of them, the five cent really is a big deal. Many of them are totally numb to it and don't really think about it anymore. And when you have one single kind of one-size-fits-all solution, I really do feel that you stymie dialogue. And, you know, what if the fee could be an option, but you could also have other choices? And then we kind of keep the ball rolling in terms of innovation. We're collecting data about what works, whether the five cent fee does work, but we can also start, you know, sort of feeling, and we could become more of a laboratory for trying to reduce single-use bags. But if there's more opportunities, I think that would really be a good thing.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, Member Pierce.
So I want to, I'm going to give an example, just I don't disagree with the conversation we're having. But I still go back to what is our objective, and what goes along with that is what's reasonable. And it is not reasonable for us to assume that we're going to get rid of all single-use bags. The point about reduce, reuse, recycle, we're going to have the same conversation when we start talking about electric vehicles. There's one mode of transportation, if we think about combustible engines, electrical, we think is better for the environment. But by every scientific study, it is not the best. It's not the best for the environment. And so what we, what I think we need to be trying to figure out is how do we get people to have the right conversation and take the right action? And I'm going to give an example. So I was in Duluth this weekend. I went to Target. Duluth has a nickel bag fee. I'm in Target with my daughter. She buys, don't ask me why, but she buys seven pairs of pants and groceries and all this stuff. We get up there. They didn't ask us if we needed a bag. She says to us, "While you guys have a mix of things, I'm going to give you a big bag for all the clothes items. I'm going to use a smaller bag for your groceries." And so we walked out of there with two bags, and we paid, I think 10 cents. I think you pay a nickel per bag. To me, that's the right conversation. We needed the two bags because of the stuff that we had. And so here's where it gets interesting. When we checked out for those two things, I had two toiletry items that I forgot to take with me. So those were also on the belt. She didn't ask me if I needed a bag for that. She wrung those up, and she sat them in front of me. And we walked out with two bags, and I walked out with three toiletry items and a receipt in my hand. And those were plastic bags. To me, that's the right, that's the right conversation. We needed the bags. And so the questions that I'm asking is, how do we get our residents to, one, understand the need? Two, I think would be great if I'm checking out at Jerry's and I'm asked, "Do you need the bag?" Or to just assume I don't, make me ask for it if I need a bag. To me, those are still the right types of conversations, because at the end of the day, I think we want people to get a bag if they need it, and we want them to have a bag that's the least impactful on the environment. And if that is the frame that we're setting between plastic, compostable, and paper, I think it's the elimination of the plastic bag. And if we have an ordinance that starts that trajectory, I think we end up in a better place than we start. And if we, if, and so if we approve this ordinance, I'm still going to be asking those questions, right? When I talk about awareness campaigns, that's the kind of stuff that I'm talking about. Because at the end of the day, and I think I said this earlier, we actually don't really know how, how much less of an impact on the environment and climate change this is actually happening, is going to have. We know it's better. And so if we can do more of something that's good, then we know it's better. And so I think that for me, if we approve this as is without restaurants, and we, what will define how successful we are is what we do in the year time from tonight to 2024. And I feel like if we do the things that I am suggesting, and there might be, there might be other things that we can do, by the time we get there, I just think we'll be in a better position. But if we don't do those things, we're going to have marginal success.
Yeah, those great comments up and down the dais here, really wonderful comments. I concur with you, James, Councilmember Pierce, and Councilmember Risher on this key question of what should be our strategy to reduce single-use plastic bags. I think that's kind of what both of you are saying. And is this, this is at least one pathway. It's not a pathway I agree with, because to me, the cost of this pathway doesn't match up with the benefit. So although the conversation has been rich and the argument's persuasive, I'd like to continue our conversation about what should be our strategy to reduce single-use plastic bags, and not necessarily assume it should be a punitive sort of strategy. So we've got an amendment that eliminates grocery stores. We've got staff that's taken out. Let's see now, I just want to make sure that on the ordinance, you eliminated the onsite collection of bags?
Yes.
And you eliminated the obligation to arrange for the pickup of bags?
Yes.
Both those are out too?
Correct.
Okay. Which was something that retailers that wrote in were concerned about. Yeah, so you tried to react to that. And then by amendment tonight, we've got the elimination of restaurants. So we could next entertain a motion to approve the ordinance in its amended form.
So moved.
I second.
Member Jackson moves. Member Agnew seconds the adoption of ordinance 2023-18 in its amended form. And its amended form includes both the amendment tonight and the staff changes that were made at that staff level. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of... Yes, yes, Member Risher.
I really have a hard time with an ordinance that does not allow for alternative actions. And I don't think I can support this this way. I would, I wish we could table it and have it come back so that it wasn't one-size-fits-all.
Thank you, Member Risher. Anybody else? Quick comment? Okay. Member Agnew.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't want to let, like, perfect be the enemy of good here. I think, Member Pierce, I completely agree that a part of this needs to be our communication strategy and our education plan and how we're messaging within all of these establishments. That's so, so important. And I also really trust in our city staff to invest the time and energy into doing this right. I even think back to the pandemic, right, when we had our masking signs all over the city, and how iconic that even felt, right? I know that we can do this as a city. And I also know that because of the requests that we have for the additional information to get, to get reports, all of that, that this is something that we can continue to iterate on, that we can learn from, and that we can change. And so I'm not seeing this as a, you know, put it out there and forever forget it. It's really about making a move, learning, and iterating. And that is why it began with, "Let's collect the data." So I will be supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Okay. One thing we haven't talked about yet are the options that Manager Hancock talked about, and maybe we can address it after we vote on this one. And I just agree on how to, you know, fund this in full implementation and proactive enforcement at an estimated cost of $145,000 in year one, $120,000 ongoing, or option two, approving it in its amended form and allowing a midterm budget adjustment to fund one-time $25,000 estimated ordinance launch costs. So let's... So let's, I think we could take that up separately. I don't think we have any further discussion here, do we? All those in favor of approving ordinance 2023-18 in its amended form as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. The motion carries. Three to two. All right, let's talk about full enforcement versus limited administration as Manager Hancock has told us, are the two possible routes we could go. Manager Neil, did you have anything you want to add there?
No, actually, that was a question we wanted to raise to you after you adopted the ordinance.
Okay.
We've given you kind of two different scenarios for how it could be enforced.
So what are, without having a motion on the table, what are folks' thoughts that are in the majority? We can start there with the full enforcement versus limited administration from a cost standpoint.
Well, I'm in favor of the limited administration. I think the data is going to be the most important thing. And if we gather the data as a baseline, get a year's worth of data, and it's not making a difference, then we can go back and say, maybe we need to, you know, change this, make a little more, higher level of enforcement, or else just revisit the issue altogether. But I'm in favor of the limited enforcement.
What are thoughts from?
I concur.
I am for limited, but I'm going to say this again. If our focus is going to be on enforcement of this ordinance, we're going to miss the mark. And so good, right? This is, perfect is not the enemy of good. Did I say that right?
I don't remember.
But if we don't have a strategy to understand what our end state is, nothing we will do will, we won't end up there, no matter what we do. And so for me, my vote of yes is, and limited, is trusting that we will take this time to figure out how we can make sure people understand, right? So that's the awareness piece. And then ensure that we end up in the right state before it even starts. We have a year, right? And so that's what I really want us to focus on, not just taking the ordinance and making sure we enforce it the way it is.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Manager Neil.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Yeah, I just wanted to reassure you, this isn't a choice between good enforcement and bad enforcement, or enforcement and no enforcement. It really is a matter of scale. And I think we can take the, the limited enforcement model or direction that the council is suggesting here and, and use that, wrap our communication strategies around it and look for the end, kind of, and try to find an end goal that we think will be supported by the council.
If you want softer language, call it limited administration, like Manager Hancock has called it. Okay, thoughts on other, any other thoughts? I think it sounds like the majority is in favor of a limited administration. So with respect to ordinance 2023-18, is there a motion to provide for the administration of that ordinance on a limited basis as described in option two of Manager Hancock's staff report dated October 17, 2023?
So moved. Second.
Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds?
Aye.
Okay. And so this would be a yea nay abstention thing. All those in favor of the adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Aye. Okay, now we're on to sketch plan review for 4444 and 4200 West 76th Street. And this matter is going to be introduced by Director Teague.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So the sketch plan before you this evening proposal is to tear down a couple of structures at 4444 and 4276th Street. This is located just east of the Sound property and north of where the new fire station will be located. Proposal is to tear down those two buildings and build a six-story, 186-unit apartment and a four-story, 65-unit apartment. These would be 100% affordable to help meet with the city's affordable housing goals. A rezoning is required to accommodate this request. PUD has been the tool that the city has used for all affordable, affordable housing projects to ensure that long-term affordability where it gets written right into the code. Examples being the Sound right next door, the 4040 project on 70th Street, and Amundson Flats. Michael Hudson with LS Black Development is here this evening and will present the details. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hudson.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hudson. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you so much for having us today. My name is Michael Hudson. I'm a vice president with LS Black Development, here with my colleagues Willie Boulay and Grace Sweeney.
Could you give us your business address too?
Sure. 1959 Sloan Place in St. Paul. Little bit about our company. LS Black Development was started as a partnership between myself, Willie Boulay, and Sterling Black in April of 2020. So relatively new company. We're working with ESG and LOX on this project. LS Black Development's sole purpose is to build high-quality affordable housing projects in A locations. We are long-term owners. We will own these projects for 15-plus years. Since our creation, a couple of the projects that we have been working on so far, Canvas Apartments in Northeast Minneapolis was our first project to close. It's 160 units, 100% affordable at income ranges between 30% and 80% of the area median income. We also have five high-priority homeless units there that are administered by Simpson Housing. We also have a 23,000 square feet of production space, kind of a light industrial maker space as well as part of that project. The second project that we closed is in St. Paul. It's 128 units, studios to three bedrooms, again, 100% affordable at a mix of incomes between 30% and 80% AMI. And again, five high-priority homeless units by Simpson Housing. This will also have a small office component, which will be our future headquarters. The third and most recent project to close is in Round Rock, Texas. That's a suburb of Austin, 252 units there, between one and four-bedroom units, 100% affordable. Once again, that's between 30 and 60% of the area median income. A couple of things to note about all of these projects, they're all under construction now. They all have high-end finishes like you'd see in market rate projects, stainless steel appliances, granite countertops, full-size side-by-side washers and dryers in each unit, and lots of other community amenities that I can talk about a little bit more. So our proposed site is here between the Royal Credit Union Building and the Sound on 76th Street. Two small industrial buildings there right now with some leases that are terminating soon. It's also across the street from the proposed fire station the city's planning. Can see how our site is laid out here, and I'll also note some, some suggestions that we did get from Planning Commission last week. So we have a smaller four-story building on the right side of the site, and then a six-story building on the left. The four-story building has a level of underground parking, and the six-story building has a parking structure in the middle of it. So people will drive into the structure, go up to their level, and then they can get right out to their apartment units and park on the same floor. Most of these units will be two- and three-bedroom units, so you'd imagine a lot, a lot of families there. So this kind of parking style works very well for families juggling kids and groceries, able to get right to their units from there. One of the suggestions we did receive from Planning Commission was to take a look and work with the fire department on potentially eliminating the full loop around the building. We did include that originally for fire access, so we will have to work with the fire department to see if that's, if there's flexibility there. But potentially, if, if that were eliminated, we could have a little bit more green space as well. Pretty basic proposed massing at this point. Obviously, our landscape and design isn't very far along, but thought it was important to kind of show the massing here. You can see how the building kind of steps up from the Sound on 76 next to it with the four-story building and then the six-story building. And really, today, we're here to get feedback from you and make, you know, next step determinations for us. So we would welcome any feedback, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have as well.
Sure. Thank you for that, Mr. Hudson. Member Agnew, you want to start in?
Sure, thank you. Overall, I would thank you first for the presentation. And, you know, I, I also reviewed the Planning Commission discussion that you had and just really want to thank you for the work and the intentionality that I'm seeing in high-end. I don't remember the exact phrasing, but like you didn't want it to look like affordable housing. And, and I think that is something that's really important, so thank you for that work. What, and I, where I'm kind of struggling, and you're seeing me hemming and hawing, is I think across the city, we need to continue to invest in and support affordable housing options. With this project in particular, my hesitation is around the site and the location and over having too much density of affordable housing within one portion of the city. So that's where my mind goes. And so there's nothing about the project in and of itself right now that I have concerns about. When I think about six stories, it's, it's maybe a little bit taller than I would like to see, but I think that it's fine, and I think that this area could support it. My only hesitation is just continuing, you know, I think of this road, and then I think along 76 there, the Pentagon Park area. It, it just feels like a lot. So that's, those are my initial observations, but I welcome maybe some additional ideas down the road that might pop up based off of other council member comments. Thank you.
Could you provide a little bit more detail around what your concern is in terms of the aggregation of affordable housing and, let's say, they're almost next door to each other, I think?
Yeah, and it's not even necessarily just the one other property there. It's, if we were to have like a heat map of the city and where we're placing affordable housing, it is all centralized within one quadrant for, for more or less, one general area of the city. And what effect I am concerned of that having is gated everywhere else, or the low-income neighborhood, or, or those kinds of things, when what we need to be doing across the city is just finding ways to incrementally increase density, to find opportunities throughout the city. And I think of, of Londonderry, right? Where are there areas across town that could support some percentage of affordable housing? I just don't want to see, and we have some control of this as a city, but other ramifications that can happen if you have one area of the city that has a lot of this type of housing. And, and I know I'm not quantifying it very well or articulately, but that's just kind of where my concerns go.
Yeah, very helpful. And then we've got one school over there, you know, it's, to that point.
Yeah.
Okay, Member Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So two questions. How do you provide market rate amenities and 100% affordable?
Sure. So what I mean by that is all the amenities that you're used to seeing in your higher-end market rate projects, we'll have all of those. We'll have work-from-home suites, fitness center, yoga center with on-demand classes, pet spa, missing some conference rooms that, that can be rented. Everything you're used to seeing, we'll provide those.
Yeah, I get that.
Okay.
But most developers say they can't do market, a lot of market amenities, if it's 100% affordable. And so some developers choose to do market rate. And so I'm asking, how is it that you're able to do that? To do all those amenities in 100% affordable?
We think it's important, not only for the tenants that are there now, for the long-term value of the, the property and us being sure that they'll stay full for, for the long term. You know, we are asking also for TIF for this project, so there is, there is a gap. So we will need help with the gap. But, you know, we think that's, that's important, and the folks that will live here deserve the same high-quality housing that, that anybody else would.
Okay, so you'll be asking for TIF to close the gap?
Correct.
Okay. My second question was why this site?
We do like the site. We know that this area, there seems to be more density in this area. We'll also say, we've been looking for sites in Edina and they're hard to come by. We have a broker on retainer looking for sites in Edina for us. And again, there's just not a lot. So, you know, if, if another site pops up in another neighborhood, you may see us again. We'd love to come back with as, as much as we can here. We just think it's such a great location. But there is access to transit. The number six bus, I believe, stops right outside the Royal Credit Union, Union Building. So, you know, we think that there's, that it's a great neighborhood that's, that's changing quickly for the better.
Okay. And third question, the, just related to the density. Is the sort of massing, the size, is that dictated, the number of units? Is that dictated by the, more or less, the funding that you're able to come up with? So if we were to ask for less density, you know, fewer levels, are you able to, do you have the flexibility to be able to do things like that? Or is it?
Unfortunately, we don't have that flexibility due to the high land cost here, so.
Okay, thank you. And then, Member Agnew covered everything else I was going to talk about, and it actually has nothing to do with you as a developer. And so I'll restate that. But I 100% agree with Member Agnew. It just so happens that the ethnic diversity in Edina, the majority of it is in the southeast quadrant. And that happens to just coincide with where most of the affordable housing is as well. And I guess I'll, I'll tell one story. So I was talking to a neighbor, and she was in the Cornelia neighborhood. And she said, hey, you know, we're for, she's for affordable housing. And she said, but, Member Pierce, it needs to be equitable. And I, what do you mean? It needs to be equitable. And what she meant was what Member Agnew said, right? We should have affordable options across the city and, and every community. If we value this as a city, every community should be taking part in ensuring that we have affordable options. So it has nothing to do with your project, but that is something that I think as a city we have to, to figure out. I like the fact that you have market rate amenities in your I like the fact that you have market-rate amenities in your building. Some of those amenities are really quite nice. And so I do applaud you on that. I don't know what the next steps will be, but I would say for me, I would want, I just don't, I don't feel like we need another 100% affordable apartment complex in that location, is what I would, just in general, say.
Thank you, Member Pierce. Member Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I want to start with the building. And I'm looking at the drawing that you had up earlier, the bigger of the two buildings. I see the entryway, that is, in the middle, the driveway-looking thing, that's to go into parking? Is that where you enter the parking?
That's correct.
Okay. And so how easy is it to transverse the building? So if you live in the northwest corner of the building, and you want to go to the amenities in the southeast corner, how would a person wa, would you walk down the hallway and then down some elevators? What would that trip be like?
Yes, it'd be walking down hallways, and then obviously, we'll have several elevators for the size of a building, yes.
Okay. And it seems to me, I heard that you were planning on having some amenities and services for kids, things, things to do and stuff. Would that be located in the green block there that's in that, that south, southeast corner? Or would they be throughout the building?
Yeah, most likely it would be in the southeast corner. Again, we're very early, so we don't have all of that laid out, but most likely, yes. We tend to group most of the amenities together.
Yeah. So this is a big building, which is why I asked that. So if you've got little kids, and you want to send them down to class, you have to walk with them, and they have to be quiet and stuff as they go by people's homes. So just kind of thinking about, and I don't have an answer, I just want you to think about as you go forward, what living in one of those apartments is, and what the life experience with a couple of kids in tow is going to feel like as you move through that. One of the things we've been talking about is trying to increase community garden space, and I don't know what this would do to the cost of your building, but over here at Maison Green, they're going to have community gardens on the top floor, which is one of the things I'm kind of excited about. The one where the Perkins Building is, Catty Corner from City Hall here. If that's something that you could, would be feasible, I'm, again, looking, I assume that it's going to be a roof all the way across it. The parking's not going to be open-air. Is that correct?
I believe, I'd have to discuss with our architect, they've done this both ways, with open-air and also enclosed, so that would be something we'd have to look into.
So it's, it looks like, just looking at the picture, a lot of cement or a lot of roof, either way. So if there were ways to incorporate something green on the roof to kind of break up the heat of that building, I would, and, you know, I don't know what that does to your cost, but, but having that additional thing to absorb heat on the roof would be great, whether it's maybe even just a white roof or something, but it does feel kind of big. So that's to the building. One thing, you know, I want to echo the comments of both Member Pierce and Member Agnew. We, as a city, need to think about our housing strategy, because this is the part of town where more density is allowed, and because more density is allowed, we can have more apartments, and it's segregating it from the rest of the city in the style. So that's on us to figure out. I know there are people who are opposed to any 100% affordable housing because they want to have inclusionary rules. I'm not opposed to it, and I think this is a good site to be near the transit. And quite honestly, we're going to get the E-line bus rapid transit coming down to Southdale, and we get a little bit more density down here, maybe we can have that come down and get that good workforce busing to come down to this part of town. So I kind of like the density here, so I'm of two minds, but, but that's kind of cool, that you've picked a site that's going to be right on transit, and then you can take the bus right up to the grocery store. There are several along in the area. So it's a really nice spot for a little bit more density. So I apologize, I'm of two minds on that. And one thing that may not be possible, but I'm going to say it anyways, is that maybe when the period of affordability is done, we look at, or you look at, rent-to-own. And I don't know, that's, that's not something we talk about in America with affordable housing, but something that I want to talk about. And, and I don't know the feasibility of that again, but if you came back and said, we're going to build this, and it looks like, I'm really excited, actually, about this, so I'm like, can we do it? But if you came back and said, we're going to build this, it's going to be rental for 20 years, and then it's going to be rent-to-own, I would be like, oh, my gosh, this is incredible. So I don't know whether that's feasible or not. Financially, it's something I would love to see. And then finally, I was made aware of a change in state law on the classification, on the tax classification for affordable housing, and you're probably aware of this. But I think because the rate of taxation on affordable housing has been cut severely, that TIF is going to be a less effective tool. So I just, I throw that out there. I don't know how that fits into your calculations, but we either may be looking at a larger TIF to, or longer TIF to pay it off or something, but that, that tax revenue will be lower going forward than it has been currently. So overall, thank you very much for bringing this forward. It's, it's kind of exciting, but it's, it's a big lift, so thank you.
Thank you. Member Rissler?
I, okay. When I looked at this, my biggest concern, and I think it's because I've never seen a building like this, where you have a parking ramp in the middle of, basically occupying what is traditionally a courtyard open space. And I watched the Planning Commission, there was mention of another building like this in Bloomington, I believe. Can you tell me more about that building?
There are, yeah, there's a, there's a few of them in Bloomington, and next time, we can definitely come with those prepared as examples.
Okay.
But yes, they're, they're similar to this. It's also very common down in Texas. We also do work down there. Oftentimes, sites aren't big enough to accommodate this, but it's a good way to, to get large parking counts.
Are all those buildings in Bloomington, are they market-rate, luxury, or affordable?
Those are market-rate projects.
Okay. How does it vent so that you don't end up having poor air quality going into the building? I'm just thinking about exhaust from the cars and all that.
They can either be mechanically vented. I'm sure there's some component of mechanically venting either way, but if there's openings on both sides, there's less mechanical ventilation that's required, is my understanding.
Okay. I personally would, and as somebody who does not have granite countertops, would say, put the money in having a parking ramp underneath the building so that you can have a beautiful open courtyard space where people can gather. And we do have, oh, I can't remember what it's called, but it's a diamond shape, and it's over off of York, south of the Y. And it was just wonderful when I was door-knocking, because I went there, and the interior courtyard space was so vibrant, with people sitting outside, kids running around on that open green space. And just historically, thinking about how magnificent open courtyards are when they are green and it's not occupied by parking. So if there was some way to keep that courtyard, but to have it as, as a traditional courtyard, you know, dating back millennia, you know, the beauty of that would be fantastic. I am not as concerned about having affordable housing here as I am about seeing apartments again, because I really think what we need to do is have units that can be owned. And I, this makes me think, what could a townhouse project look like? The other thing, and I, you did not talk about this, but when we talk about zoning and what is permitted, my understanding is this is planned industrial zone, and you're asking for a PUD, and we're going to be using that industrial zoning as the benchmark for what happens. When you look at our code, it does say that the underlying zoning should be the closest. And I really would love to know what the numbers would be for density, and for setback, and for, and for the amount of space the building can occupy if we were actually holding this to the standards of our residential zoning. And this is something that I keep saying, so this is something my colleagues have heard me say, probably not surprised I'm saying it again, but I really would love to know how this deviates from the standards we have in place for residential. I think it's, I'm getting the sense from my colleagues, they feel there's too much density. I feel that as well. But, you know, and also, if it, if it could be not another rental project, and we have done so much apartment building. And the other thing, I don't know if we could get that map up that I, that image that I Okay, so this is our regular, this is what you see if you look at our zoning map, and then I had another image. This is the language for office residential, which is the future use that we are going for. And it does say specifically that vertical mixed use should be encouraged and may be required on larger sites. And so I'm not seeing any office space or any kind of use that would maintain some of the use that is there right now. And if we can go to my other image that I submitted. Jennifer, thank you, or Manager Bennerat, thank you so much. Okay, so this is a comparison, which is not showing up that well. We can zoom in. All right. And if you look at the left, you're looking at our standard zoning, and you can see all of this purple represents PUD. And in the image that is on the right, it's really hard to see, but I have added blue dots onto the places that are purely residential constructs, or residential with maybe a coffee shop. And so what's ending up happening in Edina is that we have a lot of development that is purely residential now. And in some parts of Edina, you haven't really begun to feel it that much, but in other parts of Edina, if you go to the Wooddale Valley View Node, we're one Maison Green project away from having no commercial node, which is kind of alarming. And so I think one of the issues that keeps coming up is we are incentivizing developers to come into Edina and to find land that is not zoned for residential use, but for something else, and it really behooves them to do that, because the standards, if you go to PUD from PID, or you go to PUD from, you know, POD, you don't have to meet the criteria for our residential developments. And so that means you can cover more of the lot. It means you can have much, you know, smaller, you don't have to have as much of a setback as you would, and so those standards kind of evaporate. And I really think, you know, this is not on you, you're the developer, but I really, you know, want us to be mindful of what we're doing here, because you can see, we've got purely residential in our commercial spaces, we've got PUD that's purely residential, and that just keeps happening. So as we continue to do that, we need to ask, what's up? So, you know, and we did get rid of a lot of really affordable office space recently with a project, so, you know, we're kind of continuing down that road. But let's get back to your project, and thank you, Director Bennerat, so much for those images. Sorry, I kind of got off track. But we need to think about these things, you know? It's kind of important. How do we develop? And why can't we see how this deviates from residential development? So that's what I have to say. It'd be great if you could have something that maintained office space and also was affordable to own units. Thank you.
Member Jackson forgot one of the questions she was going to ask you.
I did. I just wanted to tell you, I actually like the Texas rap parking, because I think when you've got little kids, that's really convenient, so I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Director Teague, do you have any comment on the, on Member Rissler's concerns at this point in time, on the setbacks and everything else that would apply?
Yeah, so when the comprehensive plan really started back in 2008, it was set up this way intentionally to allow residential on this west side of France in that OR district. And the idea was to utilize the Design Experience Guidelines in that negotiation for the rezoning using the PUD. So it is the way the comp plan and the zoning are kind of set up. Doesn't mean we have to keep on that path, and as was recommended in the Planning Commission work plan, to take a look at, how can we create some zoning that is more consistent with the comprehensive plan? We thought what we would do is kind of an audit of the zoning ordinance in the comprehensive plan to make that comparison, to determine how do we want to move forward in the future.
Okay, good. That's helpful information. Member Rissler's concerns aside, what is it that you think that you get and what we get out of you using PUD? Because historically, what we've done is, under those Design Experience Guidelines, if we say we're going to let you use PUD, there's got to be something in it for us, and there's something in it for you in terms of more flexibility. But, so I'd like to have you address that, that question.
Sure, thank you. I believe what, what we get is the added density that we need in order to make this project feasible. I'll be completely transparent with where interest rates are going. This project is barely feasible as is, and Councilmember had a great point on the 4D tax change, which was beneficial in a lot of ways, but when you are looking to utilize TIF, it does hurt that calculation. So we would likely need additional assistance above and beyond the TIF. I would say, one of the things, when we brought this initially to staff, we had planned one big building. One of the recommendations that we got back, and I believe is one of the Southdale Design Guidelines, is to break up the buildings. So that's why it is more expensive to do this, but we decided to have two different buildings with a drive in between them. So, you know, there's definitely a lot of give and take through the design process and the exterior materials that we end up using. So there's, there's a lot that the city could get from a design standpoint. All of that's not fleshed out by this, this, this point, but I think there's a lot of give and take yet to, yet to come, I guess.
So what, anything else that we get, other than you go from two, one building to two buildings?
Well, you get a lot closer to meeting the affordable housing goals that I know that the city has. And I'm sure, you know, there's a lot, a lot of other design points that could be negotiated as well.
So on that, that goal issue, but you've mentioned a couple times now that you'd be asking for TIF, and you talked about the high cost of the land. And so when we think about your capital stack that you need to make something like this work, what is it you think preliminarily that you're going to need from the city in terms of city contribution of the proposed capital stack?
It's early on in the process to know exactly, but it's north of $5 million, certainly.
All right. And what do we get for that?
Affordable housing in your city.
All right. That's it? I mean, we get, we get affordable housing, I mean, that's important to us. But you own the land?
In our scenario that we've talked about, we would own the land. Staff did mention potentially an arrangement where the city might own the land, and there'll be a leaseback to ensure affordability long-term. That's something that we would be open to.
You'd be, you'd be willing to think about that?
Yes.
Okay. Also, with respect to the Also, with respect to the term that you hold to projects, you said you owned the projects for a long time, and you called 15 years a long time. Is that a fair characterization of your testimony?
I did say that, yes. We will own for a minimum of 15 years.
So when you go to sell the property after 15-plus years, the way that you're designing this is that you would, if it was sold at a profit, the profit would belong to Ellis Black exclusively?
That we will have investors in this as well.
Would you entertain, if you ask, if you come to the city and want a $5 million investment from the city, from the residents of Edina, would you entertain that we get to share in the proceeds on sale?
I'm not quite sure how that arrangement would work, but that's something that we could certainly discuss. I've not seen that happen previously, but be interested to learn more about how.
At least thinking about a due on sale agreement.
I'd be curious to learn more about the mechanics of how that would work.
Okay. Who manages the properties that you own?
Roar's Companies out of Minnetonka.
In terms of the density, does the, is the six stories essential on the west side of the project, or can that be four stories to inhabit work?
That would not work for, that would increase the ask significantly to the city.
Okay. You know, a lot of our conversations around affordable housing have been led by, and at least interacted, they've interacted with, developers have interacted with the Edina Housing Foundation. Have you had any conversation with them?
We have not had conversations with them at this point, though.
And when you talk about affordable housing at 30% to 80% of AMI, is that a decision that you make, or is that made in conjunction with the city into which you're growing? How do you typically decide what the area median income parameters are going to be?
We typically do ask the city for feedback on what goals they have and what they'd like to see.
So you could be at variance with 30% to 80%, you could be at 50% to 80% or 30% to 50%. There could be flexibility in there for you.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd say the one thing that, well, I mean, in terms of the site plan and the building itself, the one thing I kind of wrestle with is the six stories of height. I've got to look at that site down there and see what I think about that. The four stories fits in quite nicely with the Aon project. But I also understand and appreciate the fact that, and we see it in some of the developments we've approved here, that the capital markets are really difficult. And so we'll give consideration to all of that. But I will tell you that our Edina Housing Foundation, along with some of the people I think are going to be, two of the members of the city council plus some other people are going to be looking at, what kind of an ROI should the city expect when it does, when it's been asked to use TIF as a, as part of the capital stack for an affordable housing project? Is that, is that getting the affordable housing alone, is that enough just on its own, I guess is a simple way to put it? So we got to, we got to think that through. It has nothing to do with you. But a conversation we've had over, off of Bren Road and 169 has caused us to start thinking about that. What should be the ROI for taxpayers who are going to be asked to make a significant investment in the form of TIF in affordable housing projects? Should it be more than just providing housing for folks at some percentage of area median income? I don't know the answer to that yet, but it's going to be a question that people are going to be wrestling with. And it could affect you. Could, and so I'm pleased to hear you have some flexibility on potential ways we could accomplish ROI beyond just contributing taxpayer funds to the capital stack and getting affordable housing in return. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else ask any further questions, comments? Yes. Member Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Will this be complying with a green building policy?
Yes, we would have to comply with Minnesota Housing's Green Communities. Potentially, we might do more. Our St. Paul project will be planned for lead silver. It will likely be lead gold at the end of the day. So yes, we will be, we will have to comply with that, yes.
So I think that's another benefit that comes from using PUD. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Thank you.
Thank you.
Folks. All right. City manager comments.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just two quick ones. One, just to give you an update on our Assistant City Manager search, we received 68 candidates for that position. The consultant search commission is reducing that number right now and also doing kind of first round interviews with the semifinalists. We anticipate making some selections on finalist candidates at the end of this month and interviewing those finalist candidates on November 2nd and 3rd and making a decision sometime in mid-November. So that's how that search is going. Second question or comment I have for you is that, going back to Mr. Zickert's Community Comment strategy, I have been here for 13 years, you've been here for substantially longer. We've not had that strategy employed at Community Comment before. I don't think it's consistent with at least the spirit of the rules. You allowed it tonight in the spirit of, let's talk about it later. I wanted to make sure we brought that up because other people will be watching that and wanting to employ a similar strategy if we don't say anything about it tonight.
That's why I suggested that our council discuss that issue.
Yes.
And take a position on it.
Agreed. That's all I've got.
Thanks for raising that.
Yep.
And then I think also in terms of some of the other public comment we heard tonight about employees and who might be here, who is not here, you know, it's all confidential information. We're just not going to share that information.
It is.
It's why somebody's no longer employed with the city. Okay.
That's all I have.
Yeah. Member Risher.
I have another image for, sorry. It's like a, it's back to my art history days where I had images all the time. Okay. So I am working on this event. I don't know, this is World Day of Remembrance for Road Traffic Victims, and this happens the third Sunday in November each year. It is, you know, international event. The color is orange, and really, we will have, we're trying to get more lights up at night that are orange, so we have the 35W Bridge that will be lit up. We'll also have the Lowry Bridge lit up. We've got lanterns, we got a grant, so that we will have those displayed and we'll invite people who come. State Representative Erin Kegel's going to speak, who, and she got legislation across the finish line, to get a task force together to look at whether we could have speed cameras in Minnesota. So it's an initial step to really help try to slow down people when they're driving. And speed really is a huge factor in so many fatal crashes. Mike Hansen, the Director of the Minnesota Office of Traffic Safety, will also be there to speak. And I just want to get the word out that this will be happening in about a month. And if anyone listening has, would like to speak about traffic loss, we are looking for a third speaker to talk about that. We do have people who have spoken in the past that we could turn to, but it'd be nice to get some fresh voices. And so I just want to let people know about that.
Thank you very much. Member Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So last Friday, I was, had the opportunity to participate in a panel with the Launa, the laborers' union, about all the infrastructure that was passed at the legislature, so Infrastructure and Housing Summit. It was fascinating stuff, but I got to sit at the table with MHFA Commissioner Ho, and I talked to her ahead of time about where we're trying to find out ways to get financing for ownership for affordable housing in our town. And she had a couple of ideas, so I hope that we can follow up with her on some level and talk about some creativity in how we address getting homes for ownership. And so we had, continue to build that middle class here in town. But it was kind of fun to get to brag about our trip from 2015 to where we are now in affordable housing, and it continues to evolve and grow. But I'm always proud to represent the city. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Member Pierce?
I'm not doing that much.
All right. Member Agnew.
I just want to thank all my fellow council members for, I think, a really good, healthy, and respectful conversation across the board. And regardless of how opinions kind of fall, it's just really great to still see within local government, and I know sometimes that's not always the case, just the healthy dialogue that we have. So thank you all.
Yeah, good. Thanks for that. Well, I, maybe it's a function of age, I guess. I went to memorial services or funerals Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, four in a row. And I had, and some of them involved Edina residents, and I thought we should just, you know, kind of as a follow-on to some of these celebrations of life, in this case, Adam Stanzak, who lived to be 93 years old and was, you know, he was eulogized by a good friend of his named Dick Teigen, Dick and Evy Teigen. She was, at one time, I think she was the ambassador to Tahiti for some obscure factoid there for you. And they did a great job on eulogizing him, as did his son, Michael Stanzak. Many of you know that Adam, as a child of the Great Depression, had quite a life and built a great business over at Key Cadillac, the only car dealer that left in Edina. And his son now runs that, and Michael and his sister, and two of the grandkids did a wonderful job kind of celebrating Adam Stanzak. So we wanted to show that smiling face that loved people so much as well. And here's one more smiling face. I don't know if any of you ever knew Bill Lord or got to meet Bill Lord. This photo that was on the front of his program for his burial service is, it speaks so much of him. He's just bigger than life, you know? You can just see it right there. And he always had that smile on his face. He was a guy who grew up in Edina, played hockey for Edina. He went to University of Michigan where he was a captain of the hockey team. He was, I think he was a nine-sport letter winner in high school, and I don't know if he took Michigan to a national championship, but then moved back to Edina and lived here, wife, two kids, and was always happy. They celebrated him as loving family, friends, and fun, and not necessarily in that order. And they had, you know, when they served up the drinks, it was, at the reception, it was Budweiser was his favorite beverage, no matter what else was available, and Budweiser was his thing. Before I go to Tim Mason, I just wanted to mention Annie Kennedy, too, who lived in Morningside, was in Rotary with Carolyn and me. And me and, if Carolyn got a chance to know her very well. She was a twin, and her husband, Pat Kennedy, worked for Carl Sanderson Insurance and died about eight years ago, very young. And then she moved on to be by her twin sister in Ohio. And she got killed here recently in a head-on traffic collision, somebody in the wrong lane, and hit her head on and killed her. And so they had a nice celebration for her over at Men Dakota where they were members. And they had a Kennedy tree planted over there. And then Tim Mason is a really fascinating guy. He's, his brother and sister-in-law are members of the same little Lutheran church I go to in Edina. Tim was a playwright and a writer, and just finished a book and passed away here recently. But he was, he was the person that started out his career doing a lot of work at the children's theater, writing plays. And he was the one who wrote How the Grinch Stole Christmas. And one of the great plays that people have enjoyed over the years, I think he had a co-author on it, there were some really interesting people that were speaking at his funeral service that was held. And writers from New York were here, and actresses and other people that knew him over the years. And this new book that he had just got released, and he likes the historical fiction, kind of the crime novel stuff. So I'll try to get people the name of that latest book that he wrote, but he was a really interesting person, so. So those are people, the comings and goings of folks. And Jennifer, there was another person from Rotary that was an Edina resident that passed away.
That was Tom Purse.
Tom Purse. Yep. So our condolences to all those families and thanks to those people that celebrated and helped make Edina a great place over the years by living here and/or having businesses here. So thanks for that. And this morning, I went downtown with some other mayors and met with Mary Moriarity. And we got a lot of data, and kind of showing generally that it didn't, it wasn't, we didn't get a chance to drill down on the data, but it was that really crime, crime wasn't any higher now than it was in 2018. And we tried to concentrate on the kids that were involved in auto theft, and they've got a new strategy involving early intervention with some of the kids that don't get charged but were along, that they have chosen not to charge. And they say that it's, it's got some really positive feedback on building relationships, that the kids are more sensitive to these relationships than they are to the rules. Where the consequences fit into all of this, we'll see. But, and we asked for some more data on, because, you know, the data we looked at recently with our chief showed that auto theft by juveniles was the only crime category that was up in the Twin Cities. So we're, we're still working on that. And she's got some good people working for her, and maybe with some time, we'll have one of the folks come out here and make a presentation to our city council. So that's kind of it for me for the evening. Again, I thought, Member Agnew, thanks for that comment. The dialogue here has always been just really highly professional and highly respectful of everybody that's on the council, regardless of their opinion. And it's a pleasure to have that continue. So thanks for all of that, all of you. Reflection of who you are as people. So appreciate that. And anybody else think of anything else they wanted to talk about?
Do we want to talk about the presentation at Community Comment?
We could, yeah.
Yeah.
Look at here. Here's the Grinch thing right there.
Oh, I love it. That's great.
Go ahead.
We have people who come in with their friends and neighbors when they have a complex issue. And one gives one direction, a second person gives a second angle, and a third person gives a third angle. And each one of them gets three minutes. I think if you have multiple things that you want to address, you need to bring some friends along. I think one person, one vote, one person, one three-minute spot. That's my opinion.
Other thoughts? Yeah. Member Risher.
I agree with what Member Jackson just said. I would add, though, I think it might be wise to put a cap on how many people can be in a group. Because you could have three, maybe cut it off at three. You know, we don't want a group of 10 people coming in or something like that. So I think this is an opportunity to think about that.
We've had an informal sort of process in the past where we've had big meetings where, you know, somebody says, well, I'm going to get up and speak on behalf, or there are 10 people on the speaker, is somebody going to speak on behalf of the neighbors? And then somebody else says, yeah, well, I want to talk too. No, no, we'll give you 10 minutes to speak on behalf of your whole neighborhood if you're the spokesperson, but nobody else is going to get up and do the redundant thing. And the three-minute rule really got put in place to just try to treat everybody in the same way, give them the same amount of time to make their presentation. Manager Neil.
And as we've talked about that with other communities, we find three minutes really is the kind of median number. There's a few that are over, there's some that are under, but three minutes is the most common.
And I think that evolved based on going to the legislature where they give you 60 seconds. You know, you better have your ducks in a row to make your presentation. They don't give you much time, and so we thought, three minutes, people ought to be able to know that in advance, organize their thoughts, and tell us what their concerns were. So, and it seems to work pretty well over the years. And we've had some real contested hearings and here we've lined pros and cons up one side and the other and then just alternated them, but always the three-minute rule applied and was enforced pretty rigorously. So, Member Agnew and then Member Pierce?
Thank you. I also want to offer that public testimony or Community Comment is not the only opportunity to provide those thoughts. And especially when there's such a concise written statement already, you know, I would welcome those to be emailed and for us to digest those via that form. And so given that I don't feel like we're hindering anyone's ability to provide perspectives, critiques, thoughts, I would support limiting to three minutes per person.
Member Pierce?
The only thing I would add, we had, at least twice this has happened, I think the most recent time it was Morningside C. They actually only had one topic, but they took nine minutes. And so if I think about that and what Mr. Zicker did, he at least had three different topics. And so I also think that if people are going to come in with one topic and have three or four of their neighbors stand up there, that doesn't seem congruent to me either. Seems like they shouldn't be able to do that.
I've also seen three people do it to talk about salt usage. And the thing is, they, each of them had something relevant to say. And I feel as if the Morningside group, they really all, they were not repeating, they were providing different parts of it. But I really think it'd be wise or prudent to say only three people to a group if you're planning on doing something like that. Cap it at that.
Yeah, they also could have organized themselves differently where they just came up on a serial sort of basis and they would have been perfectly fine to each give us their three-minute pitch.
Yeah, no, I agree with that.
So the fact that they stood together, that kind of begs the question you just raised.
And they had one presentation.
Yeah.
Right? So, yeah.
And we have had sometimes where there'll be three and they'll, one will present and the two will be sitting in the front row and they'll just sit down and get up right away. And everybody gives, everybody else gives them deference for what they're trying to do.
Yeah. All right. Well, it seems like we're pretty comfortable with the policy that we have in place is you get three minutes and I'll try to keep them on task here. I know I've been letting them, letting folks drift over a little bit to try to finish those thoughts up. When there's a contested issue, hotly contested issues, and it's a public hearing, then we'll be more rigorous on the enforcement. So, okay. Anything else? Manager Neil, if anyone? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second.
Member Agnew moves, I mean, Member Jackson moves and Member Agnew, Member Pierce voiced the second. And any further discussion? All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Stand adjourned.
For a second here. I thought you were going to have some.